Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, December 13th, 2018. First item on the agenda, minutes from November 30th, 2018. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? I am going to make a motion to approve the minutes of Friday, November 30th, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item. The payments are going around. Next item, vote to accept donations. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So we occasionally are very fortunate to receive donations from whether they're businesses or families and we have a family in Easton, Duffy-Bertentis family, that has donated $500 specifically for the special education department as a token of their gratitude for the work that the special education department has done with their family. Their son is now a rising junior at Worcester Polytechnic Institute and Mr. Pretentis, as if on cue, is actually here this evening to, on behalf of the family, to discuss his very generous donation.
Well, first of all, thank you. And thank you for this time. It's really, it's a, it's really a wonderful experience for me to speak on behalf of my family, especially my son, Jack. When, if you, if you're presented with a, with a child who has special needs, there's a lot of things that come on in your head. You're not sure of, you know, sort of taking care of the basics, you know, the medical issues and psychological issues, emotional issues. And frankly, the educational issues are sometimes just, you know, beyond what you can contemplate. But we were so blessed and so fortunate to be in this community where Jack not only had the opportunity to, to get by, but actually to thrive. So Jack was, was born unbeknownst to us with a degenerative gut condition. And from the moment they opened this beautiful brown eyes, he started to lose his vision. And it got progressively worse as time went on. And we frankly didn't know where to turn. In, in the case of school, we didn't have to look very far. People were, they reached out to us and said, you know, we, we think that maybe there's an issue that, that we have to explore. So your people, you in essence, helped us to discover that there was a problem. And it's not like it ended there. You became part of this journey that we run and ultimately part of a solution, really. We, we were just hoping he would get through life. He's a great young man. He's funny, he's, he's outgoing, he's got a great attitude, but he has something that could have helped him there. And frankly, if my son had been born 100 years ago, he would have been relegated to some menial tasks and an unfulfilled life, without question. They wouldn't have known why he couldn't read, they couldn't know, they wouldn't know why he couldn't write, but we found out what it was. And in this case, it took a village. It really took a village. When I, when I tell you that people who were part of that village, what have Dudley Conti and Mrs. Melman and Mrs. Feinstein and Shannon Cooper and Mrs. Starr and Ms. Richards, we would go to these meetings at the beginning of the year and we'd sit in a conference room. And all of those people were there for one reason, really one reason, to support my son. I, I don't know how many places that happens. I don't think it happens a lot in the world. I, I don't even know what happens everywhere in America, but in Easton, Massachusetts, we would leave those meetings and say, can you believe this? Like, how, how blessed are we to, to live in this town? So, and frankly, you hear a lot of things about special education. And you hear from parents who've been involved in special education, who, you know, may or may not be thrilled with how their son, their daughter is, is being treated. We couldn't have been happier. I mean, when I tell you, I, I would, I'd go home at the end of the day and say, ah, they must be spending $50,000 a year to get this kid through. So when I make a small contribution to the town of Easton, it's a small contribution. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, but I need to go above and beyond because you went way above and beyond. So all I can say is that, you know, thanks to, certainly thank God, but in part to the folks in the Easton Public Schools, my, my son was able to be a co-captain of his robotics team. He was able to just get back from an internship at the British Museum in London. He's working with a group on campus that are developing technology and devices that will help blind and visually impaired people. And God willing, in 2021, I'll be sitting there when my son walks across the stage to receive his degree in mechanical engineering from one of the most prestigious engineering schools in the country, thanks in part to the Easton Public Schools. So, thank you from a grateful parent and a grateful family. And if you have any questions, I'll...
Well, for those of you that know Jack or knew him when he was here, he was a blessing to the Easton Public Schools as well, great contributor to our culture and the robotics team and of course his classmates. So we are very fortunate as well. Can't thank you enough.
Amazing kid. And he doesn't see it as a disability.
Not at all.
He sees it as a gift and he just goes with it.
Yes.
Amazing kid.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Paul, I just wanted to also thank you because I know that you were right there at the start of the robotics club now program, really. And you've provided so much support to all of those kids. I know that Jack was one of them, but you gave so much attention and helped to a whole group of kids. And now the program's just growing and growing and I know that we have, you have a lot of responsibility in that happening and thank you so much to you also.
Thank you.
And that was a beautiful tribute to the special education department and we appreciate it so much.
I could never do enough, that's the truth. I could never do enough to thank you both.
Thanks so much, obviously.
Thank you for coming in and for sharing it so highly. Thank you. Thank you. We have to vote, Duffy.
Do you want to do each separately or both do that separately?
Yes.
Okay, so, um...
Do I make a motion?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the very generous donation from the Duffy-Bertentis family to the special ed department.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very nice to hear you. Please give Jack our best.
Dr. Cabral?
Uh, yes, we have a second donation this evening, also for $500. The middle school was nominated again and awarded with the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program donation. And we're very excited to, that will also go to, to great use, specifically for the middle school. They will actually be in central office tomorrow to present, to present us with the check. They are unable to be here this evening, but they'll be here, they'll be in the district tomorrow morning.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the very generous donation from ExxonMobil. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Um, next, I have the MCAS presentation part two. Dr. Cabral?
At our last meeting, you are well aware that we had an MCAS presentation that involves the Richardson-Homestead team as well as the Easton Middle School. So this evening, we have all of our names. We are moving the AP and SAT scores report to January, so that will be in the January meeting. Because we wanted to really focus on MCAS right now and have the opportunity to have you ask any questions or get clarification and we'll move those to January and discuss this stuff.
Okay. Should we?
So Principal Wes Paul is here and Chrissy Kerwick, and they will do our presentation this evening.
Thank you so much. In January, we, as Dr. Cabral said, we will be presenting the SAT information, our AP data, our advanced placement data, as well as college matriculation. So we have a huge presentation that is now becoming a three-part series. So thank you for your, for your patience. So I just want to remind you, back in November, when we started this presentation, just reviewing, this, this is the, the presentation that was given to you in November. Just a few slides have been added, which have been added to your packets. But we just want to point out the specifics for the high school. The high school is currently still taking, well, this past year took the legacy MCAS, so the traditional MCAS. So that is the data that is being reported by, by Mr. Paul tonight. We do not have, the next generation is, occurred three through eight, which is the new MCAS 2.0. But again, at the high school level, it is still the legacy MCAS, so the still traditional MCAS from this past year. So just to review, we went over accountability and what it means for all of our schools. So in addition to meeting targets for the school as a whole, the performance of the lowest performing students in each school will be measured. So last time, we went over how the lowest performing students, the bottom 25% were identified at Richardson-Homestead and the middle school, but at the high school, it's a little bit different. So we can't use the cohort model at the high school because if you remember from last week, or last month, sorry, the lowest performing students have to be within the school for two years. They have to have, had assessments, MCAS assessments for two years. So even looking back at Richardson-Homestead and the middle school, only the fourth and fifth graders, the current fourth and fifth graders at Richardson-Homestead can be included in the bottom 25%. And only the current seventh and eighth graders at the middle school can be included in the bottom 25%. So at the high school, there isn't two years of, of MCAS data to track. So for MCAS at the high school, it will be a year-to-year approach. Improvement will be measured using a year-to-year approach based on students who are officially, officially enrolled in the current school for two consecutive years. So if a student were to move into Easton and attend Oliver Ames just for grade 10, they will not be included in the, in the, the data for the lowest performing students if they, if they did fall in that category. They will not be reported because they're new to Easton. Also, they, if they're, if it's their first or second year as an English learner, they will not be included in the data as well. And in schools where a legitimate cohort cannot be identified, so fewer than 20 students, accountability results will be based on the performance of all students group only, which is, which is where we fall. So when looking at accountability, we here in Easton fall, we do not have a population, a large enough population to have an ELL subgroup, so we fall here in our weighting of what each indicator, how much each indicator weighs when looking at accountability. So we will look at our ELA math and science achievement levels and receive points for that, as well as our, our growth percentile. We also, what also has been included now is the four-year cohort graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, and the annual dropout rate. And we receive points for that. We also receive points for chronic absenteeism, which is something that we reviewed last time. We are still trying to, we are working on that as a district, making sure that we're mainstreaming how we are identifying, how we're classifying absences because we are recognizing that that data gets extracted from our student information system. And so we're making sure that we're identifying our absences correctly. In fact, I have a meeting with our, our, our truancy, our, actually our absent, attendance officer, thank you, our attendance officer, who's Kathy Quilly in the district, as well as Karen Malika, who's our data input person. So we're, we're going to be working on that to share with, with all the schools in the district. And lastly, what's added for the high school is the percentage of students completing advanced coursework. And something that we noticed when we looked at our data was that Oliver Ames did not receive the maximum points for this, which when you see the amount of AP tests that we took last year, you'll be surprised. And so we actually are working with the state to make sure our courses are identified properly because that is something that we found, there are, there are already about five that may not have been lined up correctly with what the state counts and their, their codes. So we're really looking at this year, if we didn't receive full credit for something, we're using this as a learning year to really become aligned with what the state, what their expectations are and a real, real calibration year for us. So, um, so that will all be fixed. So just to review this as, as we went over last month, that right now, our Oliver Ames High School is not requiring assistance or intervention, yay. We're meeting targets, as expected, 84% of our targets are being met. That is, you know, when you look at Richardson-Homestead at 90%, you might expect Oliver Ames to be a little bit higher, but I think it is because of some of the, the absentee rate as well as the AP rate that we're, we're looking into and making sure that we fix. So we do expect that to be higher. And then looking at the percentiles, Oliver Ames right now is performing at the 78th percentile, so we are, our high school is performing better than 78% of the schools within the And so just then, this is the next generation, so I just want to go over, because of reporting purposes, and of course, Mr. Paul will get into more in-depth what this data means, but you can see, looking at our comparison charts for all the towns that is pulled out of our DART analysis from the state, as well as we include our neighboring towns with Mansfield and Sharon included, you can see that our ELA proficient or higher, again, using the legacy MCAS terminology, because our next-generation MCAS has different, different language to note the higher end of our, of our proficiency. You can see that at ELA, Easton is right at the top. We're performing very well. It's actually a 98% success rate of proficient or higher. And our math proficient or higher was a 91% rate. So you can see that we are looking at all of the towns that we're compared to, we're, we are more in the higher end of that. And again, as expected, we are above the state. Then looking at our science, tech, and engineering, I just want to point out that I don't really like, as I, as I, the mistake I made last year, I don't really like to put this chart in, but I am putting it in because if somebody were to look it up online, this, this data might be alarming to them. This is combining the biology and the physics. So here in Oliver Ames, our, our ninth graders actually take the physics exam. The physics exam is traditionally harder MCAS than biology, but when the state pulls this data out, they report it as science and tech engineering. And it is, we, we cannot identify by looking at the charts online, accessible to all parents or all the community members. We can't identify which assessment each town took. So I just want to point that out and I know Mr. Paul will be getting into that a little bit more. And so we're, so that's just the data that's there. I think if we took the biology assessment, our scores would be off the charts. And then basically, just next steps for high school, for MCAS, that is important for everyone to be aware of, is that this, this is the last, this, this data that's being reported is the last year that you will be seeing ELA and math legacy MCAS results. In this spring, our, our current 10th graders will be taking the next-generation math and ELA MCAS. And our department heads, along with the administrators, are working very hard to prepare our students for a more rigorous exam. The spring MCAS will be computer, computer-based, so our tech department, along with administrators, are working very hard to make sure that we can have all of the students assessed on Chromebooks or in the computer labs, 3 through 10th grade. Biology and physics this year will remain the legacy MCAS for spring 2019. And with next year, 2020, it will be the next-generation science assessment and the biology and, but the biology and physics computer-based field tests will occur in the spring. So if you remember, last year, we, there was a small cohort of students that were identified that took the 10th grade field test for computer-based, that will be occurring again. So we'll have more information on that. About a couple of weeks ago, I, I attended the Title I conference down the Cape and I attended a, a presentation about the accountability measures. And they are still uncertain about the high school accountability determinations for next year. They're still working on that. What was told to us was there is a great possibility that the high schools will not receive any sort of accountability determination for next year. So because it will be year one of receiving the results. So, um, this is the, the intro to the real, the real data. If you have any questions about the overall process, let me know and I'll get Wesley.
Can you pull up the other slides?
Yes, I, yeah. I actually opened it online.
Oh, great.
So you didn't have to... Sorry. Okay.
Okay. Just avoid catching the board.
I don't know, actually. Jessica, do you want to...
No, I don't. Yeah. I thank everyone for the opportunity to come before you again and talk about MCAS. I apologize for coughing occasionally, but like, most of the teachers were surviving on cough drops and coffee. And I thank you for moving the meeting up till 5 o'clock today so we can all, who need to be at the Richard concert. All right, let's be there. So I'm going to go through a little bit more of the data. I want to thank Chrissy, I, sorry.
No, for...
For going over kind of the, the, the big picture of MCAS because that takes a little bit of pressure off of me and hopefully we're able to get through this pretty quickly and answer any questions you might have. So this first day, graph that I, hopefully the camera zoomed in on so viewers at home can see what we're talking about, is just a bar graph showing percentage of students by achievement level with the dark blue in advanced, the lighter blue in proficient, the needs improvement, and a pink in the warning and failing in red. And it's a five-year study, four years, excuse me, one, two, three, four, no, we, we did five years on AP and SAT, sorry. And I've been looking at all of these reports this week. So the last four years, you'll see a little bit of fluctuation here. This past year, our results were 63% in advanced, 35% in proficient, 1% in the needs improvement and 1% in that failing category. The numbers in the failing category have been fairly stable in terms of it's usually just a, a very small number of students. What we have been trying to chip away at is the students who are in the needs improvement and the proficient and trying to move those students along with some more intensive work. It, it flush awaits, as you see, this was probably in the past four years, the highest level of students in advanced, but statistically, for those people who do this, it's not statistically significant enough to say. It's a lasting change, but there's a lot of consistency there of good work. And as you saw, when we compare ourselves out to other communities, we have a lot to be proud of. We're a good work, but we're a good work in progress and we continue to look for ways to become better. So this spells it out just a little bit more in, in a slightly different format rather than in the bar graph, but in percentages, so you can see some trends there. And you can see, generally speaking, when you go up in advanced and proficient, you're going to go down in your needs improvement and your, your failing slash warning areas. When we enter into math, which is for a lot of students, a little bit more challenging subject matter, so there's across the state, a little bit of a lower performance level, we're still demonstrating a very high level of students in the advanced and proficient. And it's, it's, it's pretty consistent over the last few years there. We continue to work at our highest needs students taking MCAS math in addition to their regular math, and we find that that's helping us try to break down the, the students who are in the needs improvement or proficient area and bring, bring them up into the proficient, perhaps the advanced. But we continue to work and I'll show a little bit more about some of the opportunities we have to work with these students. And this is the same information, but in a table level. So science and technology, the interesting thing, and I'm so glad that Chrissy mentioned it, when you look at the percentages of students in advanced and proficient, you see, wow, that's substantially lower than math and English. These science scores have been traditionally lower than math and English, but we've also recognized the, this, the intensity of that test in physics for ninth graders. And we've had conversations at the district level, at school committee level, when we do this presentation and we start to take a look at our students compared to other schools and perhaps concerned that we don't compare well, it's, it's difficult to compare because the state won't give us the, the schools' information on what tests they're taking. But this test is a harder test for our students and I'm going to echo what Chrissy was talking about with regard to if our students were taking biology, those, these results might be a little bit higher, but it comes at a cost and we've talked about this cost. The cost is sophomores would be taking two more days of MCAS in their sophomore year versus spreading the MCAS distraction, so to speak, away from curriculum by having them taken in the ninth grade and gives a really strong message to our students that one of the building blocks for science knowledge, which is physics, is important. And that would help, will help them in their advanced studies of biology and chemistry and eventually physics, which they take in their senior year. And some students double up on that. And so this is where you see some of the percentages that, you know, have gone up in our school. And I will talk a little bit about some of the things that have been, been a direct correlation to some of that and our intense work with special ed and our teachers. And then science, gains in subgroup population percentages scoring proficient or higher as compared to prior years. If you notice, the economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities and high need students, we had those improvements. And these were intentional on our part over the last few years. I talked about, I, I met with the science teachers, we met with the science and the special needs teachers who work with the ninth grade students, trying to make sure that the, the things that are being focused on in ninth grade courses are being broken down because they're pretty complex. And the last thing we want is our students who are struggling to get to a problem, which has happened in the past, where they're so confused by the problem that they end up leaving it and walking away and not giving it a best effort. And so teaching the skills of breaking complex problems down into component parts and trying to figure out if they understand one or two components of that problem and showing them how they already know the relationship, giving them an opportunity to either A, better guess between options, or B, write something in a short, in an open response that makes sense because they're talking about things they know. So that ability to do some close reading, looking at a, a problem and analyzing is helping us. And these are the results for science MCAS in 2018. If you remember correctly, the 2017 results here, remember, this is always confusing, the ninth grade results from 2017 get reported because they're the class of 2020 and they're sophomores. So these results, this is why there are two slides, these results here will be in my presentation next year, showing you the next class, the class of 2021, and their performance. So these were our students who were freshmen last year or currently sophomores. The results that I just went over are the kids who are juniors that took it two years previous. Does that make sense? So here, we don't talk a little bit about our strengths, ELA, math and physics. One of our goals was to improve performance, increase the numbers of students scoring in the proficiency category, decrease the number of students in the needs improvement category, former weakness. And so you see in 2017, the... were at 86, we're up to 93, math 62 to 79, physics 36 to 57. So we're gaining in the right direction based on our goal, which always, for someone who's getting better at setting smarter goals, um, it's good to see that we're moving in the the right direction when we set a target and we begin to put a an action plan together to move us in that direction. From grade eight to grade 10, so here we can do a little bit of a cohort study, we had an increase of 6% in the advanced and proficient with those students and a decrease of 6%, which makes sense, uh, from the needs improvement and warning slash failing. 90% so 96% or more of our students consistently scored in the advanced and proficient over the course of a few years. In math, we see the same cohort, 16% more in advanced and proficient and a decrease of 16% uh, in needs improvement and warning, 8% or 7% again are in that area of advanced proficient. And this is what we talked about with science and engineering, but this is again going back two years, but there was an increase of 14% in advanced and proficient and a decrease of 14% in needs improvement and warning. Those are the things that we want to continue to see. The the difficult thing is this presentation, this is the last one, public's probably giving a great sigh of relief, um, but it will change from this point forward. I'm not exactly sure how these accountability reports will go, but we won't be seeing a slide to show the increases that have been taking place. Rest assured, these increases are showing we're moving in the right direction, but the next generation of MCAS is going to be different. Although with the the next test for science, we may still have some of this data, whether they report it out or not, I don't have an answer for that. Um, ELA math science student performance consistently above state average. I think we know that. We've always been there since day one, so I don't need to really get into too much detail on that. Uh, MCAS analysis that I've talked to you about, it continues, it's an important meeting that we have. Uh, I sit down with the department heads collectively and individually to go over the results, our strengths, our weaknesses, see if there are any, because it changes from year to year, what are we focusing on? The department heads then work within the departments during common planning time and then begin to kind of do a more detailed analysis of what each department can do with those results. And then Oi continues to offer with the support of Dr. Cabral and Chrissy and your find funding the MCAS math, um, course, the MCAS English course, the summer program, the, excuse me, the academy programs for our struggling students. Every department, I have to give some responsibility to all of our faculty because every department along with the academic support teachers collaborate by implementing strategies and helpful hints that both Joanne Kaufman and Mary Romans and Nancy Donahue provide. Based on the detailed stuff that the department's working with, they give everybody information that they can work with and work into both their regular assessments as well as mid-years and finals that may help students with close reading or with interpreting graphs or with it, you get the idea, so that everyone understands the strengths and weaknesses, so not just to say, oh, that's the math department, oh, that's the English department, so that we can all partner together. Close reading, looking for very specific items of importance within a passage is something we can all do and will translate very easily when students see it in all of their courses. Detailed analysis within the math, English, and science departments is conducted using teacher reports during common planning. Uh, plans are developed to focus on correct weaknesses used throughout the year in preparation for next test administration. This is that ongoing process with curriculum where it's never it's never a static finished document. If we find, and we're going to find this a lot, I think, with the next generation, areas that we don't do as well, we're going to have to change our focus in in our instruction. And that's what we should be doing. Continue to focus on improvement performance in the high need students to increase the number of students again in those, um, higher level proficiency or, um, advanced categories. And then an ELA focus on integration of knowledge and ideas with close reading, which I've talked about. Again, close reading is not anything but looking at detailed information within passages, and students are have across the state shown that to be somewhat of a weakness, um, so we're continuing to work on it. Math grade 10 geometry classes continue to incorporate additional practice and applications of algebraic problem solving, regardless of the level of the math that they're in, there's an increased opportunity for students to see this so that when they do have, because in most cases, students in 10th grade are taking geometry, um, but there's algebra on the assessment, so we need to make sure we're reinforcing, because not every student is, um, able to carry all of the information they have. I don't know if you have experienced children where they compartmentalize and when they're done with something, they try to forget about it, move on. Algebraic principles are something that we want to make sure they hang on to. Uh, science open response questions I talked about earlier received some low scores for some questions. That's a result of getting frozen by a complex question. We do a really good job of continuing to add more of those to our quizzes and tests and classwork to help our students with that. MCAS ELA math courses are offered as part of student schedules. They're semester-based. I think I've refreshed your memory last year that during program studies, students who are in more need of MCAS remediation get it for the first semester so that they have it every other day for a half, you know, half a year. The students who scored a little bit higher but still look like they need help would get it in second semester because it's a shorter period of time from January until the assessment's in April or May. And then continuing to target students scoring the needs improvement and warning from grade A MCAS in our remediation programs. Physics MCAS remediation programs are offered thanks to the support of a budget in April and May and continue to expand focus on access to Google Classroom lessons for students who are at risk so they get more. Physics instructors work closely with resource room teachers on a regular basis to help students breaking down complex ideas. Standard level classes focus on core MCAS concepts and skills, not that they're deviating from the curriculum, but the curriculum for these students has to be very intensely tied to the standards of this assessment because they are being assessed and it takes a lot more effort to make sure they understand it at a level so they don't freeze on those questions. And the instructors share strategies to address weak, uh, topics and improve free response performance. This is where the common planning time is ideal for our department heads, where they can set the physics teachers together and let them work on that, especially when they get close to, like we're here now at mid-years. We just had a commerce, common planning time student activity period this past Wednesday, yesterday, uh, and they began this process. Continuing example, form improvement of scores again on the high needs population will improve, uh, has accomplished significant gains. The 2018 test results demonstrate that focus on contents, skills, test-taking strategies you need to design and assessment continue to improve those scores. It's nice when you have a strategy and you see some improvement, so. Threats, time for collaboration amongst teachers regarding data analysis. You'll always hear teachers talk about time. We have probably more common planning at the high school than a lot of places, and it's still not enough time. Um, and if there's a way to create it, um, without sacrificing instruction, uh, we would do it, but we we always could use more time. More resources for high need students that are in need of supporting grades nine. What I mean by more resources there would be perhaps expanding the, um, the monies that we use for the academies after school, so the academies could run at different times so that when we lose kids to a certain academy, we pick it up again. Um, we, I'm not talking about paper and pencil or electronics, I'm talking more about, um, refunding for some of the resources that we have could help in that area. Achievement gap and foundational skills of high need students is a continual point of focus. This is the thing we've talked about in the past where students do get pushed through, um, and sometimes arrive at the high school with in the physics area, some of their math skills are not quite at the ninth grade level, and we're trying to bring them up to speed to ninth grade math skills while at the same time using the science and math. And I don't know if you remember taking chemistry as junior in high school, most students say, I didn't think this was going to be a math class, um, because it's the integration of ratios and chemistry that creates these problems for students that they have to solve. When you do that in ninth grade with a student who's already struggling with math concepts, but the concepts they're supposed to be working with are the ones that are at grade level and they're not there, it can be challenging. So that's what that's referring to. Um, we're going to continue to offer the remediation programs prior to the tests and the continuation of my my work with the ELA math science department, the academic support teachers working together to meet the needs of these students. We've talked about increasing math, MCAS math and ELA offerings to grade nine students based on grade A performances. Um, this increased math and ELA time concentrated on the youth needs of students should continue to help us raise the growth of our high need students. We currently offer four MCAS classes, two MCAS math semester classes and two MCAS English semester classes. If we extended this to grade nine, meaning before they get to, so once they're in the high school, if they were exposed to this, this would make a, we would need four more classes or two fifths of a teacher's teaching responsibility. And as we know how tight the budget is, that's not as easy to accomplish without making it a priority. And right now, we're making gains based on our plan, so it's it's information for us to consider as we go through the development process. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Mr. Bob?
So I'm just, the MCAS ELA semester classes, those are in grade 10 right now, correct?
Yeah, we take we take the highest need students based on their scores, and we don't offer it to them, we require them.
I also just want to point out that one of the threats that we've been talking about continuously, and it's a threat but an opportunity, is the new the new assessment. So it's not the eighth graders coming up aren't identified with warning and needs improvement any anymore. It's either, um, partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations. And also what the assessment is actually telling us, because if they look at just those numbers, it might be a larger percentage because of a more rigorous assessment. So we're working on that between the middle school and the high school and what that means. We also have more assessments at the middle school that will be a nice additional resource for the high school teachers with the with the inclusion of the, um, the STAR 360 assessment, um, as well as our new, uh, illustrative math program at the middle school. So there will be more data, um, for the ninth grade to determine and kind of predict, um, meeting expectations.
Thank you.
Yep, it would, two things. First of all, the learning strategies that you were talking about, great for MCAS, but then, once they finish MCAS, now they're going to get ready for SAT. So you're actually two birds with one stone kind of thing.
Correct.
So that was great. The other thing I was going to say, have you thought about, you, somebody said the biology test is easier than the physics test. Have you thought about putting biology in grade nine and physics in grade 10?
We've had conversation, um, but it comes down to, uh, in a lot of the most prestigious private schools, the order is physics, biology, chemistry, physics, because the physics is a foundational skill to all of, I mean, all, it is the building blocks of knowledge for science. So we kind of, we've wrestled with this, but we come back to, um, Nancy Donahue, Nancy Donahue, Maria Nenziato, and I have wrestled with this idea about would it, would it be better if we just moved biology or we moved the kids to testing in 10th grade like a lot of communities do? And we've never just done things because somebody else does them, we do them based on what we feel is best for our kids. And we do feel as though having the ninth grade physics test, um, and the ninth grade course in physics as a foundation. And you'll see, actually, when you see the the data that Susan Mancuso will present in January, you'll see the number of our students who, when they go off to college and universities who study in the science fields, it's pretty substantial. Um, so I think we're doing a good job of giving our kids the skill sets necessary to feel confident.
There's also a discussion, um, for the next generation MCAS at the high school to only offer one science. So whether it's physics or biology, it's still to be determined.
We don't know that.
Can fresh, but, so if you did offer biology in grade nine, is that available as an MCAS test for grade nine?
It it it's grade nine or grade 10.
Okay.
You can take, there's actually a chemistry MCAS.
Okay.
So you can, if you, those are some districts that have different, yeah, orders. So that could happen.
And students that do not pass the physics take biology in the 10th grade?
Correct. So once they finish, like grade nine, the students who don't make it over the hurdle for, um, passing, since they're taking biology in their sophomore year, it makes sense to take the biology retest rather than the physics retest, because like I said before, when you don't keep, you go a whole summer and you're struggling in the course to begin with, you're probably in November not going to be, oh, yeah, I remember my physics information. So it's, you're welcome.
All right. Those are, I was just, do we ever compare our physics curriculum? Would like to make sure we get the other district's physics curriculums to see if tweaking the curriculum at all might help move those scores a little bit?
We we can, we look at the national standards for for curriculum and then, um, I'm I'm sure there is, there is some sharing of ideas from the departments, uh, with the department head networks, um, but I can't honestly answer that question to say we've taken a another school district that has ninth grade science, physics as their curriculum and looked at the two. But they're going to be very similar if the test that they're taking is the the science MCAS and physics. So they're going to be very similar.
I like the fact that you did the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats approach to looking at this. Appreciate that.
That was, that was great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time. Chrissy, do you want to log else out?
Yeah, thank you.
proposal as the next item on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Thanks.
Just put off?
So this evening, you have a familiar face, Mrs. Johnson and Ella, I'll give it this evening to let us know about an upcoming trip with our students to Greece for April of 2020. Ms. Johnson?
Well, anyway, um, good evening. Thank you for, um, sharing. I feel I was very inspired, I think she has an education career ahead of her. Uh, I'm, I'm Evelyn Johnson and a teacher at all grains for, uh, more than 30 years, and it has been a privilege and honor to travel with students from all grains since 1990. We took our first trip, and so this will be our, I think, 31st trip next year.
Wow.
And we have gone to Greece, I think this is our ninth trip coming up. The students are going to have an opportunity to learn about the history, the culture, and a little bit about the economy of Greece. We will, um, those students who are interested will sign up, uh, at the earliest convenience if this is approved, and begin some of their research on these locations. The trip itself takes place over April vacation in 2020, and will, we will travel to Athens and Santorini, Naftaion, and Corinth. The agency that we use, we have used for the last 30 years, ACIS is a phenomenal company. They, uh, just celebrated their 40th anniversary, and we've been with them for 30 of the 40 years. And just to give you an example of how amazing they are, we had, you know, due to, um, some, you know, personal circumstances, a student who needed to cancel recently, you know, on a, on a trip within the last couple of years, I think, two days before the trip. And although all the students have, you know, phenomenal opportunities to take insurance, um, policies, anyone who's traveled internationally knows that you do not generally get 100% back of your money, you know, after you, they bought the plane tickets and the hotels and everything. ACIS gave this family and this student 100% of their money back out of their own pocket. I mean, that was not an insurance policy. So I cannot speak highly enough about this company. They are amazing. The quality of the guides, the tour guides that they give us are generally, you know, college professors. The quality of the guides, the tour guides that they give us are generally, you know, college professors. And they are educators by training. So they do not, you know, pay us. We have a private tour. We always have more than 25 students, so we have a private bus, a private tour. Wonderful, wonderful staff. There's medical staff available 24 hours a day when we're away. We have our tour manager with us 24 hours a day. And we keep the students, you know, incredibly safe, I have to say, I hope this is wood, that we have never had, you know, a crisis while we were on one of these trips, that we just haven't. Everything has gone very, very well. And it's largely, you know, due to great preparation and an incredible company that we work with. So yes, I'm just, I'm hoping that the, the school committee will approve this because I think it's a phenomenal opportunity for students. I have some former students and I have to say, I have some former students who are 16 now, anyway. But they still tell me that this was the most incredible thing, you know, that they did, that they had an amazing time. And I wish every student in high school could do it, but for those who can, I think that it's very worth it. Thank you, Ella, for waiting.
Questions or comments?
I actually do have a question. You mentioned the preparation and I know that Sue Hodge is your partner and has been for many years. And she mentioned to me once how much preparation you and she do with the students, with the parents. Could you just give us a little bit more detail about that? I mean, I know you're talking about the company and how great they are, but, you know, they have some, they get, deserve some credit, but I think that you and Mrs. Hodge certainly deserve a great deal.
Well, thank you. Well, you know, we put a lot of time into, you know, some of our meetings. We do cooperative dinners with the students and the, and the families and, you know, do a lot of readings and, you know, play some, you know, just, just different activities so that the students get the most that they can out of their experience. And so yes, we, we really, you know, I worked on this for a year, you know, and so, but you have to, you know, you either love it and you love to see the wonder in their eyes, you know, or you don't. And we just have really, I think it's just, yeah, it's just incredible seeing some of the kids experience some of this foreign travel. And in the world that we live in today, I think it is so important to, you know, knock down some of the stereotypes and, you know, have foreigners see how wonderful Americans are and have, you know, American students get a chance to, you know, talk to some of the Greek teenagers and mingle. And we often visit a school and so on, so it's, it's a great, you know, exposure to the, to the big world.
Sounds like amazing. I was going to say, I remember when Ella was born, seeing you at a, so Ella, I don't think I've, your grandmother was so happy and so proud when you were born. I just remember how excited you were, but it's also my, one of my favorite girl's names since my own only granddaughter is also named Ella.
Very wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. Anything else?
No. Just thanks for your contin, you know, your willingness to continue to do this. It's really, our kids truly benefit from these kinds of experiences. And we wouldn't be able to offer them if we didn't have educators who, year after year after year, stepped up and did it again.
Thank you. And bring them all home.
Um, does, would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Second?
To approve. On favor? Thank you for your patience tonight. Okay, next item on the agenda, vote to approve the Russo Bar contract for the Richardson Olmsted roof. Dr. Cabral?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
So Director of Operations, David Pobley is here. He is going to give you the details of this project. Basically, the Richardson Olmsted roof, we know in large part is a slate roof, but there is a smaller part that is a flat surface and a different material. Has a useful life of 20 years and it's now 22 years old, going on 23 years. And so he is here with Representative Russo Bar to explain the process that we've gone through to procure a contract for hopefully getting this work done on the roof. David?
So I'm here with the boring part of it, deciding MCAS goes. But anyways, I have Rich Gorm from Russo Bar here. And as Dr. Cabral explained, we went out to bid for design services. We submitted a RFP. It was advertised on, in the Brockton Enterprise and in the Inspector General's website, so it followed the 30B procurement laws. Approximately 32 firms contacted me for copies of the request for services, or requests for the locals. Out of the 32, eight firms submitted bids for the, for the project. We created a team to review those bids. And I'm Marilyn Goodson, Todd from the DPW, Steve Legendre, the Tom electrician, the Zonnet Committee and myself. And we reviewed the eight firms that submitted bids. We ended up bringing in two firms. We brought in CBI Consultants, which was a really big firm. We, they submitted a really strong package. But the winner of the, the bid process was Russo Bar. We've actually done some work with Russo Bar in the past. You may remember the Easton Middle School about three or four years ago through the MSBA. We, we get a big section of that roof. Russo Bar was our designer on that particular project, did a great job of construction management and the plans and getting it off the bid. So they kind of, because we were familiar with them, they kind of raised them a little bit higher than, say, the other firm. But the other firm was definitely a strong firm. In your packet, I believe, you have the contract and it talks about the cost proposal. It's a $42,000 contract. There's a design development, which is Russo Bar has actually started that process now. Because we're kind of, I don't want to say we're early because I don't want to jinx us, but we're at the perfect time to, to get this up to bid where they're designing it now. They've actually gone out and they've already started doing some of the work without even having the contract in place. But we're probably going to be one of the first schools in the state to go out to bid for the next summer for the project. So, which is a good, so we get good pricing. But anyways, the first part is the design development on the construction documents. That's approximately $25,100. There's also the bidding phase, which is putting a thing similar to what we did with procuring the design contract. You have to go up the bid, so there's a RFP that I have to submit. You have to, again, do it, post it onto the, into the Brockton Enterprise and the Inspector General's website. And then there's the construction administration, which happens after we get the bids in. We choose a contractor to install the roof. We, as the, it's kind of like an OPM, like your project manager. You guys have probably heard a lot of this with the MSBA. So they're going to be acting as our OPM on the project, so they'll be doing construction management during the construction process of the project. So we vote to get the bids in, probably, hopefully by February or March, we'll have a solid number going into town meeting. Hopefully, that number can be included in the wire. If not, we have a town meeting flow, we'll have to present the number. But hopefully, Rich seems to be pretty confident. Again, they've started the process already. We vote the bid sometime in January. The roofing contract is to hold that number for 90 days or 120 days. And then we'll go to town meeting and hopefully get it passed. And then we'll start the project as soon as school ends. We'll start the project at, you know, probably June 15, June 17. In fact, we may even get mobilized further and have some of the materials delivered and stored after school, so we're ready to roll as soon as school ends and hopefully get the project done by the end of July or August 1st. Again, Rich is here. He can answer some of the more technical questions. He could probably go over the construction schedule a little bit further if you like, but that's pretty much it. So we're looking for you to approve the Russo Bar contract so we can move forward getting pricing on the replacement of the rubber roof only at the Easton, at the Richardson Olmsted School.
Now, is the roof showing signs if we are currently the rubber part?
Yes, there's actually a lot of damage. Rich can probably go into a little bit more detail. But over the summer, we actually hired Russo Bar to kind of inspect the roof and go through it. And their recommendation, they gave us a report and they recommended that we replace the rubber roof. It is like 22 years old now at this point, so it's pretty much in that zone where you have to replace it.
And just from, sorry, I just wanted to.
So basically, as David mentioned, we did look at the roof over this, this, back in, yeah, this June. And one of the things we found is, you know, the roof is starting to basically tear open. So we could actually see the insulation sheen underneath. We just recently, through our design, some of the fieldwork we've been doing recently in the past 10 days, we've been up on the roof and performed an infrared scanner that detects wet insulation in the roof system. You know, why is, you know, moisture contained within the roof system. Rubber on that roof is an adhered assembly. What we're finding now is the rubber is separating from the insulation. So that's another sign of deterioration. We're also seeing the insulation fastener plates, which hold the insulation denim and steel back. Those are rusting and deteriorating. That's a sign of moisture and intrusion into the roof assembly. So all of those factors combined, you know, makes it necessary to replace the roof, or as David has said.
Now, does that mean you have to replace the insulation as well if it got wet?
Yes, yeah, it does. We, you know, the infrared scan, you know, with the moisture is really, the moisture, the insulation is now damaged to the point where the new roof system is not as suitable substrate as to put the new roof on. And what we're going to have to do is, is we have, actually, at this point, we're going to wind up increasing the R value to building, building's insulation. Right now, it's 30% insulation and that's approximately an R value of, you know, 20. The new building, the building code right now, as it, as it stands, requires a R value of 30.
Okay.
So there'll be two, the, the new roof system will be two and a half inches higher in elevation, a total of 5.5 inches in R of 30. And there are going to be other improvements made. We were replacing the roof planes and running the roof. We have to relocate some of the electrical air conditioning lines that are too low to the roof to accommodate, to accommodate new elevation heights. We're going to import the edge metal on, ties with EPM intersects the safety system on both sides of the building, as well as various modifications to standing seam wall panels.
So will this replacement affect the slate tile part of the roof too in any way because of the elevations changing or?
Uh, not, not as much. It just where, how, how we terminate that. We go, we bring it up high and it does interact with it. So we, we may have to modify the slate a little bit and we may have to even replace some, some slate. But that will be in the areas where it intersects with the rubber.
Did you want to? Just, just for folks who don't know, that flat area of the roof at Richardson Olmsted, I believe, is over the gym. And is it also over the cafeteria?
Over the gym.
Yeah. So just for people to, might not be familiar with the building, those are the areas that we're talking about.
There's a lot of, Rich can probably bring us over that a lot. There's a lot of mechanical systems on the flat roof, like a lot of your rooftop units.
Okay.
Which do heating and air conditioning. So there's going to be an electrical, mechanical component to this project.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a disconnect that I put in again so we can raise the height of the insulation. Unfortunately, that's one of the drawbacks if we do a shutdown and put it down. Really the best time to do it is in the summer when there's nobody obviously around to utilize the building. And the one thing, it's, it's, you know, it's not a lot of work, but it does need to be done. Just to, you know, to give you a, so it allows us to flash these penetrations, make things watertight a lot easier. My favorite line is, a lot of people want one area of the roof, if you need to do that, the code doesn't allow you to do that. So we want to use something like this. So as far as, you know, in terms of, you know, the roof is 21, just under 21,000 square feet in size. So we should, let's try this right after school ends, the winter coming, show how much tummy snow day can be used up there.
Right.
But there's no, there's no reason why that, that's.
It's all I knew, Lisa.
There's no reason why that job isn't done by the middle of August for sure.
Okay.
And I know that's usually one question we get, is is can we get it done before stuff? Yes, we can. It's very, it's very, very reasonable. This is not a very expansive project. And a lot of the materials we're talking about are readily available.
Now, I know we're thinking of the actual cost of replacing the roof, putting it on the capital for, for the spring meeting, right? So what about the cost of this portion of it? Where does that?
Is it paid for this part of it?
Yeah.
Yes, so I talked to Marilyn and I talked a little bit of a discussion with Dr. Cabral. So what I would envision is that the beginning portions, again, the design development phase and the bidding phase, that would be probably paid out of the custodial revolving on the building use fund. That's exactly what that fund is set up for, for, for maintenance and stuff like that. And then the $14,600, the construction administration portion, we probably rolled that into the construction project. So when we do the, when we do the price add, the town meeting, that would be part of the cost.
And so once the design phase is complete, you'll have a better idea of how much.
Exactly.
I know you're not going to know the entire amount until it goes out to bid, but you'll have a better idea of how much this is going to cost.
Yeah, once we get to, again, we hope to have the bids back before town meeting, so that.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, that's the plan. That would be go on the town meeting floor, like, we need X amount of dollars. So when people are voting on that, they go on the amount.
Okay. Questions?
This is just incidental maybe, but that building does get used over the summer for things, doesn't it?
Yes, we have college gate usually meets there. And I've actually had a conversation with Chris.
Getcha.
No, 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 Chris, Harry, is that it?
Yeah, from.
I mean, the person that runs.
We moved it before for, for similar situations.
So we're probably, I told him, we probably have to move it for the summer.
Okay.
And so I'm waiting, waiting to circle back with him, but I had a conversation with him about two weeks ago.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the contract with Russo Bar Associates, Inc. for the design phase of this, of the Richardson Olmsted roof. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote, uh, discuss and review possible comments to submit to the FCC regarding funding of cable access. Okay, so I'm going to try to summarize this from everything I have read and tried to learn about this in the last couple of days. There's a law called the Communications Act and it governs the manner in which local franchising authorities may regulate cable operators and cable television services. The Federal Communications Commission of the FCC, a governmental agency, has adopted several orders interpreting the provisions of the act. This discussion concerns one of the proposed interpretations of the act. The local franchising authority, or LFA, which in this case is the town of Easton, issues franchises to cable, cable providers such as Comcast and Verizon. As part of the franchise agreement, the cable providers pay the town of Easton not more than 4% of their gross revenue during a specified time period. This money goes into a special fund for public, educational and government access channels, also known as PEG, which is then given to ECAT for this purpose. In addition, the licensing authority, the town of Easton, may require the cable companies to provide certain in-kind services to the community. In the past, the cable companies have not been able to deduct the value of these in-kind services from the amount they pay to the town. However, under a proposed interpretation of this act, the Federal Communications Commission may find that certain in-kind contributions by the cable companies can be deducted from the amount due back to the licensing authority or the town. It's unclear what will be included in these in-kind services and how they will be valued. The concern for us is that the cable companies may be able to value these services such that they owe little or nothing back to the licensing authority or the town. As a result, our public, educational and government access programming could be greatly reduced or cease to exist. The FCC accepted comments on its proposed rulemaking. A comment opposing this interpretation was filed jointly by the Alliance for Communications Democracy, the Alliance for Community Media and the cities of Bowie, Maryland, Eugene, Oregon, Palo Alto, California and Portland, Maine. The FCC is now accepting reply comments on the comments previously filed. We are being asked to consider filing a reply comment supporting the comments filed by the organization I just listed. So I gave you all a draft of the letter for your review. And if you want to review it and let me know, if you don't ask me any questions, but if you're going to know.
So, but my questions aren't so much about the letter because it does seem obvious to me that we would, of course, support this. So, but my questions aren't so much about the letter because it does seem obvious to me that we would, of course, support this. Because ECAT provides a really important service to, you know, district and to the town at large. But I do know in the past, Caroline, I'm gonna have to ask you to help me remember. I think Comcast actually did use to make donations of technology. We used to get some of our technology capital budget from Comcast. Are we still getting, I, I know, I think the answer, I'm pretty sure the answer is no, but do we get any kind of service or donation that would be considered an in-kind donation? Not anymore?
Yeah, okay.
Well, but would you consider the, the fact that Comcast, ECAT, covers music events, sporting events? Um, anything, you know, if the school, any of the schools want, would that, would you consider that?
Okay, yeah.
Richard, no, no, for, and you know.
No, that's just, okay.
That's what they're, that's, they're looking to deduct from, right.
But ECAT has donated.
ECAT has committed.
ECAT, but not Comcast or Verizon.
But, hey, in kind doesn't have to necessarily be services, I don't think. It can be usage of certain.
Okay.
Okay.
Really don't ask me too many, it's very, it's, it seemed very complicated to me. Um, but this is certainly something that I talked to Jason Daniels earlier today. And this is something that they are concerned about, that they do think would have an effect on the funding of ECAT.
Now, I think Comcast stopped some, some time ago.
Yeah, I know.
Providing any kind of donation. At one time they did provide, you know, actual funds.
Right.
Uh, but I'm, I'm thinking fifteen years ago?
No, not that many years ago.
Ten, twelve, ten.
Cause it was still happening when I first.
Oh, no, no, it happened four, but I think it started fifteen or twenty years ago and then it went on for a number of years. Yeah, I, I, but ECAT's in a completely different category, I mean, it's a, it really has.
No, but what I'm saying is if Comcast was giving us something, that's, that would be considered that in-kind donation that they could then deduct from what they're supposed to be paying.
There are potentially other in-kind.
That's what I wondered, what are the, do we know? I could, no, don't.
I mean, it's, it's.
I just wondered.
Yeah, I mean, it's all in the, but it's, to me it seems very complicated.
Yep.
It's not kind of cut and dry for Easton, it's.
Absolutely.
Kind of nationwide, so, um, so it, are you, is everyone comfortable with submitting, um, a reply comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Alright.
I just feel like ECAT's become more and more involved in making sure that the whole community is informed about what's going on at the schools and, and in the town generally, as Jane mentioned, so, um, I mean, anything that would negatively affect ECAT, I would be certainly opposed to.
Sure.
Did you wanna read the letter?
Uh, sure, I can read the letter. Um, it's addressed to the, the, um, the FCC. Um, on behalf of the Easton School Committee, we are writing in support of the comments of the Cable Act Preservation Alliance in the second further notice of proposed, proposed rulemaking. We oppose the tentative conclusions the FCC reaches in the proceeding because of their impacts on our community. Easton Community Access Television, or ECAT, enables the residents of Easton to watch broadcasts of our elected and appointed board and committee meetings and our town meeting. Easton residents are not always able to attend these public meetings and having access to watch live or the on-demand service is a valuable tool. This level of transparency for local government would not be possible without having our public, educational and government access channels available to our residents. In addition, our students and public school administrators use the service to create programming and educate our residents. ECAT enab, enables the residents of Easton to watch uniquely local programming about our community and local events. That was the intent of the PEG provisions of the nineteen eighty-four Cable Act. To enhance local voices, serve local community needs and interests, and strengthen our local democracy. By defining franchise fee in an overly broad fashion to include, um, in-kind support, the FCC's proposals will shift the fair balance between the cable franchising authorities and cable operators and will force communities to choose between franchising fees and these types of channels, PEG channels. Something that was never the intent of the act. PEG access does not solely benefit a local government or franchising authority, it benefits and strengthens a community as a whole. By allowing cable operators to reduce franchising fee, support for local communities, this potential rulemaking diminishes the ability of PEG channels to serve communities such as ours, we ask that it not be adopted.
Thank you for taking on the research and the writing of that, it was very complicated.
Well, the writing was, uh, you know, uh, Jason gave me, uh, you know, a lot of help with this, so I really appreciate, thank you. Um, and spent a lot of time talking me through this, so.
And luckily you have your, uh, legal background, which was similar to some of this.
Well, yeah, this is a whole different hall. So I would like a motion to, um, approve this comment and to give me authority to submit it on behalf of the school committee.
So, second?
All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Uh, discussion and possible vote on the capital budget, that's the dog.
Thank you. Once again, David Twomley is here, he will talk about the components of the capital budget requests. Uh, and answer any questions that, if you both can answer any questions that you may have about the request that you have for the upcoming, upcoming capital budget.
So, uh, I think earlier I handed out a summary sheet, it kind of lists all the items, you know, kind of walked me on relatively quickly. So, as we just talked about, the Russo Bar with the, um, replacement of the rubber roof at Richardson Olmsted School, that is on our list. That's, uh, we gave an approximate number of six hundred thousand dollars, that could be more or less, but that was kind of like a plug number for now. Uh, the replacement of the synthetic track and track at Moschato Stadium, that was something that was discussed, I think, back in September or something, uh, with, uh, Phil Matthews. I think he, uh, he talked about two hundred thousand possibly from capital, so that's on the list. Um, recently, the, um, the lift that goes up to the press box over at Moschato Stadium Field, and so we need to replace that, that's twenty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. We actually already have an estimate, but we'll probably go up to bid for that, um, so it may come down a little bit, but right now the estimate is twenty-seven eight sixty-one. Uh, we're also looking to, uh, it's called a, um, smart UPS backup, which is, we need to, we need one at the middle school and we also need one at the high school. Uh, the one at the high school is twenty-seven oh one six and the one at the middle school is twenty-six thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. They're basically battery backups, it sounds crazy, but when the power goes out, there's probably, I'm gonna say five seconds or something like that between when the power goes out and when the generator kicks on, these battery backups kick on immediately. And if you don't have these battery backups, you don't want them to fail. Because if they fail, all the mechanical systems in the school will then fail, life will cost us a lot of money. And it's mostly a technology need, but it does affect some of our, like, uh, HVAC equipment, so these are really important. So you wanna replace them before they fail on you. So, I'm talking with some of the experts at the DPW and through this company, that Steve was then ready to got the estimate fund. They said you, you're kind of getting towards the period where you need to replace them, so that's why they're on the list. Uh, also I have the, um, technology departments and engineer, uh, stuff, unfortunately John couldn't make it. But, uh, for computers, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred forty dollars. Projectors, uh, he gave us a number of thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty. And network upgrades is thirty thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars for a total, uh, capital total need of, uh, one million eighty-three dollars, eighty-three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. So, if you have any question with that, that's where I'm at.
Just to point out a few things, you'll remember that capital expenses are anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, that has a useful life of more than five years. It's not for any kind of services, it's only for capital goods. Uh, this is higher than it's been in the last few years. We obviously have maintenance budgets and revolving accounts, but there are some things that are obviously non-planned, unplanned things like a lift dying that needs, uh, to be put in place for NDA compliance, uh, the roof, things like, things of that nature. We clearly do not have this in our budget, in our operating budget, even if we put all of our maintenance funds together. The technology is there, um, again, as you'll remember, uh, the last couple of years, we have been moving technology procurement to the capital budget. Because we're, we, we're needing to move more and more of our overall budget over to human resources and our, and our employees and services. And so, things like technology, we're getting almost solely from capital now. And then, of course, there's a generous donation fee that has been happening annually, we don't know, see how long that will continue. Um, this is what puts us in a reactive budget, because obviously we would like technology to be part of your operating budget cause you can plan how much you need many years in advance. But right now we are in reactive. Should we not be able to get some of these capitals, uh, capital funds, we would be in regressive. So we are straddling that line right now. Knowing where the town is at, I think it will be very difficult to get all of this. So we will obviously put it forward and see, it's gonna depend, what are the needs of the other departments in town this year? What are, you know, you never know, of course. Um, so we may need to, to scale back if the town requests it. All of these are obviously things that we think are, uh, critical. You will see in your packet, this is an overall of this year, but you'll see in your packet, we do a five-year projection for the town. And of course, that includes all of the improvements to the buildings that we've known about since the Doran Whittier Report in two thousand fourteen and before. So you'll see that, again, we moved a lot of things out past FY nineteen and FY twenty into subsequent years. At any point, some of those things could also be moved to the forefront if it begins to fail. So this roofing project has been on, of course, we knew it was in, nearing its, the end of its useful life. It's been on there, but similar to other things that are on there right now, we're pushing, we pushed it forward for several years until it was no longer, we're no, we are no longer able to do that. Now it's actually gonna be, it's costing us money because of the things that you heard, um, discussed tonight from the representative from Russo Bar. So, that could happen with the other buildings as well. I will point out, which I think is obvious, that many millions of dollars of those improvements, um, represent improvements of our three elementary schools. So, um, yeah, budget will look a lot different if we are able to, to get a building project. And it's gonna make a big difference if it's a building project for one year, uh, one school or all three schools. But you will see there's a total of, what's the bottom line?
If we were to do everything?
If you were to do everything that, uh, we have been counseled needs to be completed in the next five years.
Mm-hmm.
And some of those things, we also put an origin date on there so you can see when we started asking for it
Right, okay.
because it's, some of them are several years old.
Mm-hmm.
But you will see that for all of the schools combined, uh.
Ten million.
Yeah, for five new school owners, a lot of hearing, six, seven, one dollars.
Oh.
Okay.
Where am I at?
So each, each of the schools is put in there separately.
Oh, okay.
So I apologize, I don't have the total on here.
Alright.
But.
We talked about money.
But it's gonna be like multi-million dollars.
Well, that, that was my question because I.
I think the last time I added it up, it was, uh, over sixty million dollars.
Okay.
So I know none of the, um, items for the three lower elementary schools are on this and I understand we're hoping for a building project, but are there any items on here for the lower elementary schools that are really kind of in that emergency category?
Well, obviously, anything to do with lead, asbestos. We have been putting that in our operating budget, small amounts here and there. And what we've been doing is we haven't completely, we haven't done complete projects. What we've done is remediation. So, for example, Parkview had tiles that were lifting. Um, or we're, we're in danger of lifting, we're getting close to the adhesive, which is what is, where the asbestos is located.
Yeah.
Uh, we, you can't get to a point where it's showing. You have to take care of it before you get to that point, obviously, because it's not something you want to become airborne. So when it gets close enough, we, in this particular case, removed a few tiles and then put a carpet runner over the rest of the area. And that isn't gonna last for, or it may not even last for ten years, but, uh, we're trying to be fiscally prudent in one, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with a building project. But, yes, we are putting things off that will ultimately need to be done, um, but it doesn't make sense to, to do remediation of an entire floor and put in a floor for three hundred thousand dollars if by some chance the school's gonna be demolished.
Right.
And we're gonna pay for the abatement of the rest of the building for, for it to be demolished.
Right.
Right.
So, we are sort of in a holding pattern right now on that.
Okay.
Um, but anything that does become, um, an issue to the extent that the, uh, Richardson Olmsted rubberized portion of the roof has become an issue,
Yeah.
we will be forced to put it on capital.
Yeah, just to kind of follow up on that, so, um, just so that everybody knows, we do follow all the, uh, the OSHA standards as far as with asbestos, like we have an adhering report.
Right.
We have a, uh, like a designer that's a consultant that works with us. So whenever you're going to do any kind of work with asbestos, whether it's a small repairs, they come out, they write up a report, they submit it into the state, the state gets it. And then they, we, uh, actually go up to bid, you know, a company called, to do those small little work, uh, bits of work. So, we haven't done massive amounts, cause they, uh, they actually write up a report every three years, they do the adhering report and they identify stuff that maybe like just moderately needs to be replaced. And those are the things that we've been working on. And in fact, probably in February, we might do a little bit of, um, just small repairs like during February, they can.
We haven't had a breach.
Yeah.
Where there's actual abandoned exposure, because that's, that's what, you don't wanna be, react to something like that. Uh, so we haven't had that. But where we have a point where we have an imminent issue, we take care of it before that happens. So, there has not, you know, we have air quality testing constantly. When a project's being done, containment field's put up, air quality assessment's done all the time, no one's running the building till it's over. So, it sounds, um, you know, scary to say that, the word asbestos. However, we are vigilant about making sure that there is never a breach, so we have never gotten to that point. But that's why we are constantly monitoring it and we have to make sure that we take care of anything before it gets to the point that it would be a breach. That's something we're not willing to compromise and we will always go before capital on something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just, uh, one last thing, you know, this is the snapshot as of today, I mean, it's kind of like what, uh, Dr. Robb was saying, I mean, if something comes up two months from now that we didn't expect and it's out one of the higher elementary schools,
Right, right.
you know, this whole plan is gonna kind of change, so, but right now this is a pretty good.
Well, that's, that's why I want, so I wanted to ask about the turf and the track, because I know it's at the end of its useful life and we've discussed this ongoing, but I feel like this is kind of our emergency must be done now, West, going to capital. And as you said, things may come up between now and then. Is this something that we feel is an emergency must be done now? Or is this something that can be put off for a while and maybe made, make other arrangements to deal with it? I mean, where are we on that?
I think, uh, I think Bill back in, cause he'd be best to kind of answer that question. Um, I think the other thing that you gotta look at, when, back in October or September, whenever it was that we presented that, uh, those numbers can kind of all kind of move around. I know that he was recently, he got a letter from the CPA committee saying that, uh, the project would qualify, I believe, for CPA funds, but they didn't tell him how many funds, how, how much he would get for that.
Of course not, not all of it, yeah.
Right.
My point being is that, I think we kind of gave you a list of, like, um, two hundred thousand from capital with this much from CPA and fundraises.
Yeah.
But if he raises more money or if he gets more from capital, uh,
Mm-hmm.
then all those numbers kind of change around, so.
And some from the revolving account, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, if you don't tap into that as much, then maybe we can hit that. So, it's kind of a moving target, but, um, you know, I think Bill would be, is kind of the expert as far as, um, whether he thinks there's more life in that turf or not, or if you could put it off, or.
I have asked Bill, uh, obviously I've asked him about that. He is, um, very concerned about the safety of the students using the field. Uh, however, there, you know, what would be the plan B, which is, uh, if you were to have, um, a serious problem with the roof, for example. If you were to have, um, a portion of the roof have such a leak that it comes through the building, we've seen how much that costs when a classroom or space is damaged by water. We have, and it's not always completely covered by insurance. The spaces that are immediately under this portion of the roof are the gymnasium and the professional development room and the cafeteria. Those are large spaces that are useful all the time. Uh, it also is where we have all of our HVAC systems and units, so it's, it's a really important area. If there were to be a serious problem there, that would create a serious problem for running the business of the school. If you're talking about the field, we would never have children, we would never have students use a field that we, at, at any point feel is unsafe. It isn't unsafe right now. Bill can't predict when it will be unsafe, it could be unsafe in the very next season. The plan B for that would be not using the field. So, it has been done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Schools have stoked and just did it because they're, they were building a new stadium. It would be an awful lot of work. It may be more expense because we would be bussing students to other fields instead of our field and so forth. But we could still have game. We could still have athletic competitions and games as opposed to potentially not having school. So if you're asking as far as the plan Bs, you know, would we, uh, prioritize one or some of these over others? Yes. However, um, you can always take something off of capital later if you decide to do that. Um, again, Bill Matthews is working on trying to get private donations. He is going before CPA. Everything that he thought actually would qualify for CPA funds didn't that was in fact concern, uh, confirmed by the committee that it did qualify for CPA funds. Doesn't mean he has them yet, but he, he can go forward in the process. So he is working very hard to get that finished. Um, like I said, you can always take it off if you decide to or if something comes up. Um, but his concern is that at any moment, the field could become dangerous. As long as you're aware of, you know, what plan B is and if you feel comfortable with that, then that's fine. But, um, it is important to know that the field would not be able to be used if we felt that it was unsafe for students to be on it because of it was compromised because of the.
And so I guess there's another piece of that from my perspective, which is, and I don't know how he would go about this, is to push hard and say the two hundred thousand needs to come from donations. We need to figure out a way to raise that money to support that turf if it's such an important project. And I have to think that if the community thinks that that turf is so important, it might be possible for us to achieve that goal.
That's just a fraction of what would likely be needed, right?
But they've got the other amounts from CPA. The two hundred thousand is a fraction is what you're saying. Right, what I'm suggesting is that rather than going to capital, rather than going to the town for capital is if that could be raised into, uh, through private donations.
I believe he had already identified either as a hundred, two hundred.
A hundred, right.
Okay.
Right.
For.
I think it was a hundred.
Oh, okay. I, I'd have to go back and look. Uh, for private donations already, I guess.
So last time they did this, how was it paid for? Does anyone remember?
Yes.
Well, there were, there was a, an organization that formed, the Friends of the East and Athletic Complex. And they raised a substantial portion, we got a federal grant. Actually, I think through the work of one of the Board of Selectmen members at the time. Um, but the town also pays the balance with capital funds. And that's, uh, so how many years, about ten years ago or so?
Ten. Yep.
Yeah. So it was a combined effort. Uh, I will say though, that at that time, the private donations were a larger portion of what is projected at this point. But first of all, it's not the whole project. I mean, that was more expensive because it was the original, all of the, all of the.
Right, this is just a part of the terrace.
So.
Yeah, right. This is just a, as we used to say, a carpet. Anyway, so, uh, but, um, I was under the impression, I think I missed that meeting. So I was under the impression that the private donation portion was actually larger than what you're re- recalling now.
Do you have that?
I have a document here, uh, looks like the private donations were two hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
And then from what I'm seeing here, it says, uh, fifty thousand athletic revolving.
Yeah.
Town capital, two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
CPA, three seventy-five, for a total of eight twenty-five.
Right.
Yeah, I knew it was in the eight hundred plus range altogether, so.
So what's your, you are saying like four hundred thousand then from private donations?
Say that again, go through those numbers again.
Yes, that's right.
I have, um, according to this document that I found on here, it was, uh, private donations was two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Athletic revolving account was fifty thousand.
Was fifty, yeah.
Town capital, two hundred.
Okay.
CPA, three seventy-five, for a total of eight twenty-five.
Got it.
Yeah, that's right.
And again, like I was saying earlier, if he raises more, then we can take away some of the capital.
Right.
Um, you know, maybe if we're, if we do well with our revolving account, we can push more money that way, so.
Well, following what, I'm sorry, what, what Leisha said, um, you know, I, I agree that maybe at some point we would be asked, we would be asked to prioritize. But for now, to me, it makes sense to, to move forward with the recommendations before us. But I'd like to say something else. With the exception of the approximately a million that we got for the feasibility and design studies, because we were invited into the MSBA process, um, for a new building project. With the exception of that money, which was from a separate funding, dedicated funding source for the schools. The school department has gotten a very tiny portion of the capital budget over the last few years, a really tiny portion. And when you think about the fact that, you know, we're fifty-two percent or so of the town budget. It's higher than that when you include benefits and so on. It's lower than it was years ago proportionately, but it's still, you know, a large portion of the town budget. And when you consider that we provide direct services to four thousand citizens, a hundred and eighty-two days a year for six, six and a half hours a day, plus all that after-school time. I think that we probably provide close to ninety percent of the direct services in the town. So I think that when we come away from the capital budget, particularly in the area of technology, for example, um, it somehow seems a little inequitable to me, I have to be honest. So I agree that we have to respect the town's needs and we're all part of the same town and so on. But I don't think this is an unreasonable request considering the last half dozen years or so. And, you know, what a tiny proportion of the capital budget we've been allocated.
Can I ask a question about technology? So I recall, I think it was two years ago now, when we had a meeting and we discussed kind of a, a different strategy in terms of how we'll be funding technology, that we would fund it from two mechanisms. That some would be our operating account. But then there was also, my memory is not perfect. But there was also a piece where we were talking about, in addition to kind of repairs and maintenance and replacing old things, we were also talking about a cycle where we were bringing in, in capital, new, I can't remember what it was, new pieces of technology. We haven't, have we done that over? Right. So we've already sacrificed, this is my point. We've already sacrificed a big part of what was our technology from a, a more, I don't wanna call it proactive, but almost a more reasonable approach. Because at some point, all of that technology is going to need to be replaced. So we've already delayed something that we saw was important and critical.
Right.
So we're two years now behind, right? So that's, wh- when we talk about kind of priorities, that concerns me. Because that was a really, I remember when we looked at it, it was a really strong plan. And it was a good plan. Um, so I have, I'm assuming that this a hundred and thirty-six is not for any of those. It's more the repair and the replace and.
It is, yeah. Well, the network upgrades absolutely is for that.
Right. Yeah.
Um, the computers and projectors, right, to replace.
Right, it's not any of that strategic, okay.
Right.
Okay. So, again, there is a need at some point to set some priorities, I think.
Okay, so I, I agree with you. Um, so, uh, any other comments or questions or? Alright, so, uh, I'll make a motion to go forward with this capital, um, improvement summary sheet request. Um, knowing that, um, I mean, I just have to say this, if, if it comes down to prioritizing it, to me, the, the roof comes first and the, um, the technology items come second.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, yeah, the, the.
Yep.
Well, they, the, the.
Go ahead, sorry.
The budgetary, the, the.
Yeah, the batteries, yeah.
The batteries, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna add something about the technology. Um, as curriculum is in my realm, I think it's important to advocate for the need for computers. Um, because of the state's switch to computer-based testing on MCAS, we have a three-month window for assessing and we have twenty-one hundred students that need to be assessed. Um, we currently have, um, not even half of that as far as devices, uh, Chromebooks specifically. Um, so I think that that's important just to note is that for three months, because we shift, um, the, the, the Chromebooks from one building to another, instructional opportunities using Chromebooks is, um, is put on hold. So because they're used for assessing. And so many of the opportunities that our teachers, you know, especially I think specifically at the high school, when we're looking at, um, have been preparing our students for after graduation for three months, their, their opportunities are limited.
Mm-hmm. And I'll just take that and go to the balcony view of it. That's the three months where we're taking tests.
Right.
There's a reason that the test is online now and that has to do with the skills that are expected of our students as a whole. And so that should be the level of interaction they have on a regular basis in the classes.
Yes, right.
And so we're not even at the point where we can offer them. We literally have, um, where, the goal that Jane had referred to was three hundred devices in each grade banned. So three hundred devices, nine to twelve, three hundred devices, six to eight, three hundred devices, three to five, three hundred devices, pre-K to two. We are, um, close to or at capacity, depending on the day and what's working and not working. Three hundred at the high school. The middle school, uh, is not there yet either. Uh, Richardson Olmstead is a hundred and twenty-five, so they're not even at half what we feel that they should have there.
Right.
And, um, I won't even get into pre-K to two because it's just, it's negligible.
Right.
So should some of that be on here?
Right. Um, some of that is reflected in what's here, but not, we can't get all the technology in one year anyway.
Right, cause you couldn't.
Because we literally have one administrator for, um, infrastructure and we have, um, two point six people who service all of them.
Yeah.
And then we have one person for instructional technology who helps everybody use them.
Right.
Um, so we don't have the capacity to put them all online at the same time.
Okay.
In addition, excuse me, we're, one of the things we're improving is the network. We would overwhelm the network.
I see.
And then, um, and then finally, you know, similarly, when you're setting up your house, it's very difficult for you to buy all of your appliances at the same time.
Right.
Because then at a later time, you have to replace them pretty much all at the same time, which is why.
Right.
So we do have to parcel it out.
Okay.
Um, for, for those reasons and some other reasons too.
Which was the plan?
Which was the plan, correct, yes. We had a plan for, uh, it was a five-year plan to have three hundred devices at every level.
Okay. Okay. And so it wouldn't make sense to add any of those items to this current list for the reasons you just stated?
Yeah, we, we look at it as like a three-legged bench, um, or stool. Um, you really need to increase them at the same time. While capital can help us with two of them, infrastructure and devices, the third one is personnel.
Yeah.
And capital can't help us with that.
Okay. Right, okay.
And we're so far behind in personnel for technology that we, we really have to catch up there. And unfortunately, capital can't help us with that.
Okay.
Okay.
But the eighty, the, uh, the lift though is an ADA requirement. So even though nobody mentioned that as a priority, it kind of has to be, because it does, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, right. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I guess I'll make a motion to put forward the capital request as, um, Mr. Chuanli has, has given us.
Second.
All in favor?
And we'll just continue to look at this as we come closer to the question.
Good.
Thank you, Jane.
We are being asked for preliminary capital budget from the town, so, excuse me, so we will share this as our preliminary.
Right.
This is what we'll, yes.
Okay, next item, discussion and vote on unified letter to Eastern Community. Alright, so.
So the Human Rights Committee has asked us to join them in, um, writing a letter that they, uh, are advocating as, um, a unified message, message regarding recent incidents, um, of bias in town that they believe, um, this is an action step toward helping town members believe or understand that the, um, different committees here that I'm sure you'll talk about, um, and individuals represented, have a unified, um, front in what we feel is acceptable and desirable for our children and for Eastern.
And we, we appreciate them spearheading this. Um, the incidents were, you know, we appreciate the quick and decisive actions taken by our school administrators and the police to investigate and impose appropriate consequences. But this isn't something, and, and we know the schools are doing as much, continue to do quite a bit to teach, um, to strive, to striving to foster an inclusive environment through cur- curriculum and modeling behavior. But this isn't something that can be solved by the schools alone. So we do appreciate the fact that the Board of Selectmen and the Human Rights Committee have come together, um, to work all of us together on what we can do going forward. Um, and this is a really good first step. Um, it's been signed, as Dr. Cabral said, it's been signed by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. It's been signed by the Acting Town Administrator, by the Chair of the Eastern Human Rights Committee, by the Chief of Police and by Dr. Cabral. Um, the School Committee is the last piece in this puzzle. So, um, I believe you all have a copy of the letter in front of you. Um, does anyone have any comments or questions on the letter?
I know you had considerable input as well, so I appreciate that.
Sure, it was, it was nice to get a chance to work with Liz Bornstein, who is the Chair of the Human Rights Committee. So that was a, a nice collaboration. Um, so I just need one, somebody to make a motion to, um, accept this letter, to endorse this letter and to give me as Chair the, um, the, the ability to sign the letter on behalf of the School Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Great.
Where will this be distributed?
Um, I, I am not sure how, um, Ms. Bornstein plans on distributing it. That's gonna be my next conversation with her when I, you know, deliver it to her. I believe she's gonna give it to some of the media outlets and, um, I'm not sure how she's planning on distributing it through towns. It's gonna be on, you know, town websites, human rights websites, I'm sure the school website. We'll kind of try to figure that out as, as well. Um, but I will let you know. Following up, uh, Discussion of Equity and Diversity Action Plan, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So, just as a quick reminder, there, uh, I did send out, um, a letter to the community. It was very, what I considered a call to the community. In, in line of recent events, and I'm not gonna push that very often, specific events, because to, to be honest with you, that's over, um, and has been dealt with and I'm convinced it's been dealt with properly. What I'm talking about now are the, um, results of conversations regarding different things that have happened. And the realization that a broader conversation is, would be very beneficial in our community, in our school community and in mentality Eastern. So the letter that I sent was quite lengthy, I understand that. However, it came from many questions that I was receiving from people in the community who really weren't aware of everything that the staff and the administrators do on a daily basis in the area of equity and inclusion and, um, diversity. So I thought it was important to share. One thing that I was a little bit disappointed about was that we are working on the strategic plan right now and we wanted to really roll out pieces of it to the staff for conversation first. But it seemed as though people were unaware that we had been having these conversations anyway as a result of feedback from our, from our amazing staff. So I, I thought it was important to share with them different things that were already happening and in place. Those included our core values. Those included the transfer goals that we talked about as a staff, the strategic objectives in our five-year, um, strategic plan and also the, um, priorities that we're going to be working on. What we've done now is we've had a conversation with the Cabinet and the Cabinet is now going back to their schools. We don't wanna come up with a strategic plan without our professional educators. They, they are, um, they're who we rely on, they're who we're here to support. And so we are pushing the priorities out and asking them to come up with the action steps that they, in their professional opinion that we value, would be most beneficial to our students moving forward in accomplishing the goals that we have, um, as a community. So I thought it was important to share those. So those action steps will be coming to you, but only after we get that really important. that we have um as a community. So I thought it was important to share those. So those action steps will be coming to you, but only after we get that really important information from our team. Um, in terms of an action plan, I I just want to set that up first because of course there is already a lot in motion that people perhaps weren't aware of and that we're still pushing out and we're gonna get to you. But I also listed a partial, and believe me, it was a very partial list, of all the things that happened in our district, literally from pre-K to twelve. From curricula to resources to conversations to supports to actual programs. Um, there are already many things in place, which isn't to say we can't advance our conversation. Obviously, we can and we intend to. I am appreciative of people and organizations and committees that have stepped forward to ask how they could help us as a school system for sending us resources and programs. It isn't my intention right now to push out a pre-K to twelve program. Um, really and truly, our educators are doing a phenomenal job with this. Um, and it is an educationally sound to just throw a program that's on. There's program initiative fatigue right now, as you are well aware. Doesn't mean that this isn't important. Um, however, we are already hyper-focused on this topic and our locus of control is within our schools and within our students, with our students. What we don't have a an influence on and is outside of our sphere of influence is the greater community. And so when different um individuals and committees have reached out to ask how they could help us, my response has been very similar to what I hope was clear in the letter, which is please mirror our efforts and including what we're about to go forward with and mirror those efforts with the greater adult community. Um, because we are continuing to work with the children and we are developing our understanding of what our students need and asking for input on that from our staff and from our students. What we're looking for is to hopefully create some common language and strategies that we use across the community that we're already using in school and that we're gonna be adding uh in in school. Anyone who's a- aware of the development of children knows that the goal is always transference. You want them to be able to take what they learn in school and transfer it to real-life situations forever and take that with them. Being able to apply what they're learning in school to authentic situations outside of school would be greatly helpful to us. Being able to um have those teachable moments be used as teachable moments would be wonderful. Uh, however, children sometimes don't see the interconnectedness of things. And while we might talk about respectful conversations or filling our bucket and and um different campaigns we have like the abolishment of the R-word at schools, sometimes they don't make the connection that that is universal and is expected outside of school as well. So being able to be with a child when you together observe something that happens that is against the core values of of what we expect in school and pointing that out to children and saying, you know, respectful and responsible conversations is one of our core values, you know, do you think that that you just acted with a respectful relationship? And maybe let's take a step back and talk about how we could do that over again, but using respectful words. Um, that would be really helpful to us in making the connection. Aside from that is um serving as models to our children and that is also one of our four core values is leading through modeling. And we're asking that all of the adults, including ourselves, just remind ourselves that our children are constantly watching, they're constantly listening. And we're all not perfect and we may slip up, but taking those moments to stop and say, you know, what I just said, do I want my child perhaps to speak that way? Or what we just observed someone else saying or doing, is that something that I want them to take with them as potentially acceptable? And just stopping and having that conversation. So um that's really how we feel the community can be helpful to us. And so we wanna share what we're doing as a school community and ask them to share um with us some of these resources. We're happy to to push them out to anybody who's looking for them. So in addition to what we have been doing that we are not gonna stop doing, we are also doing some things at each of the levels that I would encourage people to look for. So for example, the pre-K to five level, the principals decided that they wanted to create something called, well, it is starting as being called the principal box, but they're gonna get together and see if there's something else they wanna call it. But in essence, it's the idea of having a spot where children can deposit any kind of information or questions that they have that maybe they want to do anonymously or they want to go right to the principal. Uh, and the principals will be looking at those regularly and explaining to children really the proper way to use the box. Uh, it's not a, you know, it's not the tattle box. We still wanna encourage children to solve their own problems and and um utilize the tools that that our um wonderful teachers have taught them and how to solve their own problems. But it is an opportunity for s- someone to make use of another channel. And opening up channels is really something that we're looking to do. We also have really looked at where um we have lapses in judgment with our with our kids in the middle of the lesson. That usually happens in our more unstructured times like recess. And so we are looking to offer some more resources to, excuse me, our library, uh lunch and recess aids. Um, one is actually called um peaceful playgrounds. It's something that our um physical education teachers have already been very excited about, got on board, where they teach more structured activities for children to do um things that are ob- obviously very health-conscious and physical. Um, and they teach the recess aids how to very simply um facilitate these activities with kids and so it gives them a little bit more structure during recess time, which we see sometimes is a is a difficult time for kids. Uh, we all, we already have things in place that are of that nature. For example, there's a wonderful walk-in club that is in our schools that students use and they, if you've ever seen them with their very proud little foot necklaces, it's it's great. At the high school and middle school, uh we are looking to use the advisory and focus blocks, which you know are really concentrated times with smaller amount of student per teacher ratio to have those conversations. We are going to have a pamphlet that uh is almost completely put together now. One is unique to the high school and one is unique to the middle school that again talks about those channels. Who can you turn to if you have a question? We put all of the resources on there, but also the kinds of things that you can ask about. A student may not think about asking for support if, for example, their their parents are talking about getting a divorce. They may not see that as a school uh connection, but we want them to know that we we have support for any of their concerns. Um, we also have a student survey being made up so that we can assess right from the source what they're experiencing, what their reality is, what they recommend and share. Uh, I actually, this isn't on my list because I actually had set this up before and get this happened, but I'm having um drop-ins with students at the high school. Uh, also at the middle school, but the first one's at the high school. So tomorrow actually is the first one. And uh it's it is just that, it's drop-ins, brown bag day, we all bring our lunches and during all three lunches, any student can drop in and have a chit-chat about anything. You know, I've been doing that for two years with the staff in each school and so I wanted to push that out to students as well, make myself accessible to them. We are also creating an anonymous tip line for grade six through twelve that will be electronic. There are some schools in the state that have similar um things. It sounds really easy, like just put it up there, but there are a lot of considerations. We have some disclaimers on there. We want people to know this is not time one-one, for example. So we have to be careful that we're we're guiding people correctly and using something like that. Um, so we're putting together the wording for that. We're having legal counsel check it over. We wanna make sure um our counseling experts are taking a look at that. We wanna make sure we we lead kids in the right direction. Uh, and we also have looked at some resources from outside organizations. One I mentioned was the Anti-Defamation League that I did reach out to and also reach out to others. One thing that I've already discussed with both the middle school and high school principal is a program that the Anti-Defamation League has worked. First of all, they've worked in over a hundred school districts and schools in the Commonwealth. And um this particular program is intriguing to us because it's a peer-led program. So it is not, you know, adults pushing something out to students, excuse me, and it's a proactive program, it's not a reactive program. So it's again, it's it's how are we enhancing what we're offering to students moving forward? And it's 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 training thirty students in particular on uh how to facilitate conversations with their peers about concerns or questions or suggestions they have for inclusion and equity in their school system. We think this is a really powerful skills for students to have. We have the greatest faith in our students that they can lead such conversations and so we're looking for uh further into that peer-run program. For district-wide, we have um looked at professional development, as I said, to the Human Rights Committee. We are not just going to throw professional development at at our staff. We are going to participate in administrative professional development, however, in how we can better support the staff and better support the students. So we are looking at administrator professional development and then um any teachers that or or educators that want professional development, of course, we're gonna be offering that through Eastern University. And um there's also a Title IX national certification. And Chrissy at first is going to be getting that training. We're looking at a date in January where she'll be participating in that just to give us even more information about what's happening across the nation. And then um depending on her assessment of the program itself and and its usefulness, we'll take a look at um having more administrators certified in that area. And then, of course, the longer-term goals that we have. Uh, those are going to be set by our committee, which we talked about also in the letter. We're looking to have uh parents, students, a Human Rights Committee representative, teachers, administrators, community members and a a school committee member, if if we have a school committee member interested. And it's that committee that will come up with our goals and our action plan going forward for how do we, again, it's not a reactive committee, it's a proactive committee. How do we look forward and look at the best ways? We're in a fast-paced, ever-changing world and how can we keep um our resources open to our students and our awareness um of of our students' needs at the forefront and what can we offer them for support?
No, I'm I'm, you know, I have a lot of of thoughts about this, but mostly what I wanna say is um I continue to be impressed with the work that all of our educators do on behalf of every single student in our buildings. And um, you know, I I know that you talk about a proactive approach and my sense is that um we're already in a pretty proactive um relationship with our students when it comes to a lot of these issues. I think that there are, most students up at the at all of our schools know that there's somebody that they can go to if if things are um are if they're struggling or if if there are things that occur. So um I do I do feel like as a community, we need to figure out how we talk about these things a little bit better. And and make it okay to talk about these things a little bit more. But I'm really impressed with your response, the response of 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 the administrators in the in the district. And and we had a student come to the Human Rights Committee and give a very powerful statement about how he felt about the support that he had up at that high school, so, you know, it was impressive.
If there's one student that doesn't know, we wanna make sure that student acts out.
I agree.
Um, and if there there is a student that's having an experience other than we understand their experience to be, we wanna know about it.
Right.
And so we're gonna pursue this until we feel confident that we know the experience of our students and that we're able to meet their needs wherever they're at.
Thank you. Jackie and I were able to tour Richardson Olmsted um earlier this week and we had a little bit of a conversation with um Mr. Getchell about, you know, kid, programs that he has in place to make sure that kids feel comfortable going to adults in the building that they connect and so on. But one of the things we did talk about is that, you know, he makes himself totally available, the adjustment counselor does and um I think also the assistant principal, but he, we talked about the fact that there may be some kids who would be more comfortable seeking out a conversation with a nurse or with another teacher or whatever. And that in at the elementary level, it might almost make sense to have just pictures of five or six people that are in the building and you can go to one of these people so that the child can kind of say, well, you know, I'm a little, maybe I'm a little intimidated about going to the principal or maybe I, you know, don't really know what an adjustment counselor is, but I know the nurse and, you know, or something like that. Just just making sure that kids know there will be an adult in the building that will be absolutely receptive if they come to that person with a problem. So it was just something that we talked about a little bit with uh Mr. Getchell and I I do think that we kind of have to have different strategies for different age groups when it comes to making sure kids can connect.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rachel.
Um, okay. Discussion possible vote on the educational programming for the elementary school project, Dr. Cabral?
Okay. Shift gears. So, yeah, sorry. So last evening we had a school planning committee meeting, at which point the school planning committee voted to forward the educational plan for your approval. They their role is to forward it to you um and and recommend and your role is to approve it. It's an MSB required vote, MSBA required vote to move forward. Just as a reminder to folks, the our our wide audience, um, the education plan is really the absolute bedrock foundation of a building project. We have to make sure that while it's exciting to look at what a new building could offer and you start seeing designs in other schools and people get very excited about those kind of architectural and design features, that really the core of the whole thing is the educational program. So we had a fantastic team of volunteers who came together and did the first pass draft of the, it's the Educational Leadership Team, came together and did first pass of a draft. It's a very, as you can see, it's a it's a dense document with a lot of information. We had volunteers, as I said, from from every area, from um the the core content areas, the arts, physical education, administration, facilities, and all of them contributed to the initial document. But then it was further enhanced because we've then had all of those visioning meetings and community forums that we've been talking about. So there were three community forums at four hours each. There were two community, uh, three visioning forums, is that what I said, at four hours each? Two community forums for input from the greater uh community and one faculty forum. And as a result of that, all of that information was compiled in another fifty-page report and that was integrated with the draft to make sure that all perspectives and perspectives and lenses were represented in this educational plan. What was the point of view of a parent as opposed to administrator, as opposed to a teacher, as opposed to a student, as opposed? So we put that all together and uh on a rather tight turnaround this past week, Chrissy Pruitt went over this with fine-toothed calm and made sure that everything that the Educational Leadership Team recommended was included and everything from each of those forums that I talked about was included and put it into this great package you see here. And I will say that last night, the designer of the project said uh to the committee that this was the best education plan he's seen and they work with obviously a lot of programs. And he said, you know, it often takes a long time for the MSB- And he said, you know, it often takes a long time for the MSBA to keep pushing it back to you to get it to this point. And he thinks, uh, it's already there. So the MSBA does need to approve it before we go further. All of the decisions that have to do with those architectural and design features will have to be a direct result of what is in this plan, which is why it is obviously very important going forward. And so, uh, we are asking for you to vote to approve the plan, to go to the MSBA. They will then vote to approve it, hopefully, and then we move forward, uh, in the project. But this really is, like I said, it's the bedrock of the entire plan and we really can't move forward anymore until this is approved, uh, by the MSBA. And then all our decisions will come from this.
Questions or comments? Would Jane do want to add anything?
This is, just to be clear, in terms of the MSBA approval process, this is one component of the, it's called the PDP. It's the Preliminary Design Program. This is one component of that program that we will be submitting in a January timeframe is what we hope for for them to approve. So, you know, but it is really the foundation, so.
Thank you for all your hard work on it.
To go through it too, because you you have to not only talk about your current reality and anything that is really missing or you're in a reactive or regressive stage on. But then you look forward and you say, you know, what do we envision for our pre-K to two learners? It's a really, uh, unique population. We looked at it from both the K and pre-K perspective and the grade one and two perspective, which is different than any other grade level. And so we think we have, I think we have a really tight plan and an exciting vision for the future of our early learners in Easton.
It is very dense. It covers ever, I mean, really, it's really amazing. Thank you.
The MSBA has pretty specific requirements about what they want to see covered in this program, so.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion to approve the educational programming for the elementary school project and to pass on to the MSBA.
This is removed.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I think Jane and I hesitated to.
Yeah.
We're all on the school planning, I've already sent it forward, so I felt like it was a little bit of a overlap.
Thank you again to the dozens and dozens and dozens of people that helped us get to this point and to Chrissy for really making it the package you see before you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Next item is discussion opposed possible vote to approve the agreement with the Eastern Girls Softball League. I'm going to make a motion to table this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Next item is a person, personnel change, personnel change, retirement. Um, Dr. Cabral, do you?
Sure. Lisa Hadley is a food service staff member at Oliver Ames. And, uh, she has decided to retire effective January third, two thousand nineteen. She's been with, uh, the Easton Public Schools for twelve years now. I don't know if any of you know her. She is, she's a talented vocalist. And she is, uh, at a point that she is able to pursue some other opportunities and is excited, excited for her about being able to pursue that, um, in her retirement.
So I'll read her letter. Dear Roberta, the purpose of this letter is to formally inform you of my impending scheduled date of retirement. On October twenty-fourth, I met with the Bristol County Retirement Board and made my decision to retire on January third, two thousand nineteen. My last full day of work will be January second, two thousand nineteen. I feel privileged to have been able to work with and get to know you and several other wonderful women in the kitchen during the last twelve years at Oliver Ames High School. I wish you and all my coworkers great success and happiness in the future. Thank you for everything and the best to all. Yours respectfully, Lisa J. Hadley. Very nice letter. So I'll take a motion to accept Ms. Hadley's retirement.
It's removed.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, have a comment? None? Superintendent notes?
Okay. Just a couple of things. First of all, I was, uh, pleased to attend an Ageless Easton event this morning. We went to one last week also, uh, and there was another one this morning. AARP did a presentation. It's a priority for us, as you know, the intergenerational connections that we've, uh, started and hope to create some more partnerships. So there were some exciting, um, ideas that they were sharing today. I did talk to them about the, uh, MSBA project for the future because the the presenter actually shared with me that one of their initiatives right now is petitioning the MSBA to give bonus points on grant reimbursement for intergenerational projects. Uh, I don't know if we're like far enough in the pipeline that it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect us yet. However, as you know, from the educational plan, intergenerational partnerships is something that we've really been advocating for. And one idea that actually percolated up several times in the visioning was adding, uh, the senior center to, portion to the elementary school so that we could continue that work. So that was kind of exciting. I'm not sure if it will actually apply to us or not, but it definitely does, um, it definitely validates the value that people place on that, that interaction between our seniors and our and our children. So that was interesting. But anyway, I was I was thankful to be invited and I look forward to continue work with them. Also, um, I, oh, I also had a meeting with Rabbi Ken from the temple in in Easton. And that was a wonderful meeting. It was a very lovely meeting. I actually asked if we could have it there because I'm trying to, um, see where our kids see and be where our kids are. And that was very powerful for me. I have a meeting, um, with the Interfaith Council of Easton in January and I'm really looking forward to that as well. And, um, that one's off campus because they all meet together. But when I'm there, I'm going to see if I can invite myself to, to go back with them and set up some meetings, uh, as well individually. So I'm really looking forward to that as well. Um, I think that's it for now.
Assistant superintendent notes?
Sure. On December fifth, Wednesday, um, Eastern Public Schools was recognized at Bridgewater State University by Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito for our participation during the Commonwealth Massachusetts First Annual STEM Week. Um, Easton had a display with pictures from all the events. Also, um, many of our partnerships were highlighted as well. So it was a, it was a wonderful event. Mary Romans, our, um, math department head, was able to attend and accept our, um, certificate, which was wonderful. She she was very excited to do so. Um, we've also had a lot of professional development in the district that I just wanted to you to be aware of. I mentioned the case, the Title One Conference that I went to down the Cape, which was very informative. It was nice to meet with other Title One directors, as that's one of my roles, um, within the district around the Commonwealth to see programs that they're that they're using as well as, um, other opportunities that they're offering their students who might not be, um, performing to the to the standard that they hope that they are. Our paraprofessional, um, our paraprofessionals participated in professional development this, last week? Last week? Oh, my gosh, all the dates are merging together. Susannah Summers, our Director of Instructional Technology, and John Sousa, our Director of Technology, led our pre-K through eight paraprofessionals through some technology training. We know that our paraprofessionals need to experience our safety and security training through synergy in the Easton Police Department and Fire Department. Um, that will be held on March twenty-first because that is the opportunity that all of our paraprofessionals will be together. This day was, didn't, um, excluded our high school paraprofessionals, so we know that we wanted to do it on the day that they were all together.
The high school didn't have half-day, correct?
Right, right.
We didn't want to have it when we didn't have all of the professionals present.
Um, our Level Literacy Intervention, which is our intervention program, our reading intervention program, K through five, they had some follow-up professional development this past week. We're also setting up professional development for our middle school math program. They will be coming to Easton. And then yesterday and today, I was very fortunate along with about fifteen to sixteen other staff members to participate in the Behavior Health Symposium, um, which was over in Mansfield at the Holiday Inn. Some wonderful professionals, um, four keynotes throughout the two days. It was on social-emotional, um, topics. Dr. Maurice Elias spoke about social-emotional character development in academics. Chris Willard spoke on making mindfulness stick. So led us through a lot of mindfulness activities when that was all yesterday. We had fourteen members of the Easton Public Schools there on that day. Today was the most powerful day. I wish our whole entire Easton Public Schools community could have been there. Corey Hamilton Begayis spoke culturally responsive approaches to school culture and climate. And in fact, four of us sat and had lunch with her as well and kind of brainstormed some some topics with her. So I can't wait to share those with Dr. Cabral. And then we ended the day and I walked in here, um, but with Pam Garamond, and her, that her topic was happier at work and how the science of happiness boosts productivity and joy. And it was, we had a lot of laughter. At the end, she asked if any of us would thank somebody else in the room and I was very fortunate to be able to publicly thank, um, Anne Weintraub and Higgins for their commitment to our students and how they love to make learning fun as they were our two principals there for our younger students. So it was, it was just a wonderful, um, wonderful day today. I wish everyone could have attended. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
School committee notes?
Um, last Wednesday, Thursday, uh, we all were there at the, um, National Honor Society induction, which was, it's always a lovely evening and just to hear what the kids do outside of school. Plus keep their grades up. So that was a very nice night and congratulations to all those kids.
And to all the teachers and educators that they honored that evening.
It's such a nice part of the ceremony.
But you know, you think of the kids and they've had how many teachers between pre-K to twelve or eleven, basically? And, uh, it's a hard decision to choose a, choose an educator.
Anyone else?
Well, I already mentioned the Richardson Olmsted tour that, uh, Chris Getchell gave Jackie and me, which was great. I mean, it's just really so much fun to go into the classrooms and see the kids working so industriously, but also, um, just seemingly so happily. And, you know, I've just asked a child in each classroom some kind of question and it's amazing how poised and, you know, I really don't think in fifth grade I would have been that receptive to some, you know, random woman who walked in the classroom and said, now tell me a little bit about what you're doing here.
And not distracted either. They could not have cared that we were in that room. They were focused on what they were doing.
But happy to answer questions and happy to explain what they were doing. And, um, it was really delightful. So thank you for giving us that opportunity for, you know, continuing that tradition.
We appreciate you coming in. It's very important to see firsthand everything I am looking for.
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining from the teachers unit. In my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second? Call the committee?
Neil, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Brooke, yes.
Martin, yes. Okay, thank you. Good night.